September twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Kevin, are we live?
Yes, we are, Madam Chair. We are live and ready to go, so.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, to the Board of Commissioners, Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session for Tuesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-two. This is Chair Catherine Harrington, and I'm joined by Commissioner Pam Trees, Commissioner Vice Chair Jerry Willey, Commissioner Nefesifi. Kevin is Commissioner Rogers online, or? Rogers is here with us as well. I am just back from a trip, so I will be wearing a mask during our meeting. So if at any time I am not speaking loudly enough, please do let me know. So I appreciate that. So we have a kickoff with board communication. Who would like to go first? Go ahead, Commissioner Trees.
Good morning, I'm, uh, morning, Chair. I'm also back from the same conference. I came back last night, so if I nod off, just, just nudge me, I'll, I'll, I'll come back, I'll come back. So I was gone for the conference. It was, I think there might be a better time to talk about it. Like, but it was fascinating information. It was, it, you know, I'd go so far as to say for me, it really changed my perspective on a lot of things from a global perspective. And that's what those types of events tend to do. This, this week I have a check-in, a coffee with Commissioner Phi and Mayor Beatty. We've, we've set up a regular meeting for the three of us since we share that, that area. I have an ERM DAC meeting. I have the Community Action Board of Directors meeting. I'm meeting with Kale Wambacher regarding the design for the new stadium that they're looking at. On Thursday night, there's a governor's dinner for female legislators from around the state that I'll be attending. And the Housing Services, it's the, a year in review roadshow celebrating the first year of S H S. And I'll be at the second stop, the Project Homeless Connect Day Center in Hillsboro. Thank you, Megan, for letting me know all this. And then Friday night, there's an O S U Extension Services Harvest Dinner at the North Willamette, the North Willamette Research and Extension Center that I'll be attending. So that's my report.
Great. Welcome back.
You as well.
Who's next?
Uh, I can go next. Welcome back, Chair Harrington and Commissioner Trees. We, we missed you, but Chair, Vice Chair Jerry Willey and myself and Commissioner Rogers did a good job of holding down the fort while you were gone and had a really good, uh, robust workshop, I would say. A lot of topics that we covered and look forward to hearing more about, continue those conversations. Last week, I had our Public Health Advisory Council meeting, our monthly meeting. I mean, always good to hear all the public health issues happening and what that committee is working on and, and feel like I, I, every month when I attend, I kind of get a sense of the pandemic. We're weaning off of that, which is really hopeful and good because I don't hear any alarming updates or any new, sort of a new version of the coronavirus popping up. So it's great news and helpful. Uh, I had a really good briefing with our Under Sheriff, John Cook. As many of you know, there's a, the, the community around, and the neighbors around the Beaverton Encampment Creek sort of mobilized and galvanized themselves to take matters into their hands around the homeless encampments. But as everyone knows, the county, because of Martin versus Boise, we can't have any anti camp ordinance as the county. And I think people have been reaching out to ourselves, the board, and wanting to really have some kind of a mitigation to, to just get in the space of problem solving. And, uh, we've been, you know, I wanted to have that conversation with Under Sheriff Cook and say, what are the safety concerns that we should immediately act on and what's happening? And, um, I plan to, myself, uh, to take a walk on those encampment, both to Shaw Street and, and I encourage, and if one of you or some of you want to join to just see with the sheriff and to just see the problem. Because, um, as you saw, I don't know if anybody saw the clip about the Fox News, the coverage they did. I think it's, it's good to have a conversation with the neighbors. But one of the statements I give to the news was, you know, it's not fair to shift one neighborhood frustration to the other neighborhood. So I think that, and a lot of them, the feedback I got is they understand that, but they would like to problem solve this with us. So I think, um, not to call out Marnie, but the team is working on, um, to figure that out and look forward to that conversation, Marnie, everyone. I also had ever.
I ask you a question?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I've heard a little bit about the concerns and the elevation and, 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 and tempers. But, but I'm not close to it. I, I don't know. Is that something you want to say offline or you want to tell us? What exactly is happening? I mean, are people getting fairly militant or are they just getting loud voices?
My understanding is, um, majority of the people in that camp want to be housed. However, there are a few people who don't want to be housed, and they're the ones causing problems for those who are unhoused, uh, taking shelter in the camp and around the neighbors. And some of those frustrations include, um, uh, people showering, using people, other people's water, as you saw in, uh, as it was depicted in the news. And the, the HOA has a fountain, people taking showers with the, with those waters. And then, um, kids being whistled, especially girl kids. So I think those are some of the frustrations that are here. And then what's not real, you know, the other frustration is this encampment has been there for two years. And I think the neighbors are saying, County, Washington County Board of Commissioners, what are you going to do? When are you going to move the people into housing and empty this, clear and clear this camp out? And I think, uh, because of Martin versus Boise, we can't do that. So, and so there's that disconnect. The answer?
Yeah, I just was curious.
Yeah. Good questions. The, I had a meeting with, for my first time, uh, hearing about this project, Joff Roach. He's working on a project with Hidden Creek Community to design a park for all abilities. It was a really interesting project and, um, I had a really good, um, conversation. And one of the questions he asked was, did I inspire you? And I said, yeah, park for all abilities is inspiring itself and really look forward to having conversations about that. I think, um, the funding mechanism, um, they have an idea and I think, um, can see what we can do, keep the conversation going forward. And because we're coming off a pandemic, I was able to attend some, uh, be with community and attend some community events. So I was able to attend the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Heritage Dinner. And over five hundred people were there. I was at the Convention Center, Portland. Obviously I had to drive over there, so I spent about twenty-five minutes complaining about that. So, uh, you know, we gotta hop on so many freeways, Roy Rogers, to get to Portland.
Max, it goes right there.
Well, I live in Aloha, so it's so easy to say that.
Just go to Beaverton Transit Center, turn, it goes right there.
Yeah. That too. That could be.
There was so much pent-up demand to be together in Beaverton.
Oh, yeah.
We experienced that at the conferences.
So much, yeah. People were just like hugging and it's so good to see you, you know? Especially when you take your mask off, you, you know? I had for a while my, my mask on, people didn't recognize me, but then I, you know? I recognized people, so people were like, who are you? Uh, speaking of transportation and how many freeways we, I had to hop on to get to that, shifting gear to transportation stuff. I also had a J-PAC last week. Great news. Um, Washington County projects are all funded now. We submitted nine projects for Rafa and Park Lawn. And one of the challenges we were having last month was, uh, one of our, two, uh, two of our projects didn't score high enough. So it was, um, to fund or not to fund was the conversation. And, uh, Metro did a really, uh, good job of saying, well, let's make sure Washington County gets all the slush funds that were left over, which was about one point four million. Uh, and on top of that, they actually found extra two hundred thousand dollars for Washington County. So transportation, uh, staff, kudos to all the conversations that you've had with Metro staff and the T-PAC. Because that's how we were able to get that, all the funding. Yeah, however, I think one of the, the, the challenge with that is they said, well, let's just give it to one project, which Fano Creek. And I had a J-PAC meeting last month and, um, uh, one of the thing we did was, uh, make an amendment to that and say, take five hundred thousand dollars from Fano Creek and give it to Allen Boulevard, which is a complete street and, you know, highly diverse neighborhoods. And on top of that is a highly under-invested corridor. So, uh, I don't know why we didn't score. I think Beaverton and myself were going to look into how we can tell our story better next three, you know, the next go-around for Rafa. Because we should have scored around the safety and equity should have scored high because Allen Boulevard and many, you know, to people who are familiar with Beaverton, majority of the businesses are people of color, neighborhoods and so. But, uh, Mayor Beatty and I talked briefly about that and we'll look into it and see how we can tell our stories better. Uh, but that's a great news. So Allen Boulevard is federalized now. Fano Creek is federalized, which means it opens the door for more federal funding. So I'm really glad and excited and J-PAC unanimously voted for that. So yay, we have all our projects.
Yes, congratulations. Thank you for continuing to push, push, push through the process.
Yeah.
You really stepped up to the plate on that. And then the other learning was how, uh, mayors from the other two counties were present at J-PACT to testify in support of their projects. Washington County mayors were absent from that. And so there's a real call to action to ensure that in the next cycle, they do participate.
Yeah. And we had really good conversation at W C C C around that limitations, around sort of showing up in spaces and, and telling our story and advocating for our constituents. And, and also lack of presence sometimes tells a really negative story that isn't there. So I think, um, that was the concern and the conversation we had at W C C C. So hopefully, um, we'll be able to keep pushing and, and broaden that conversation to see maybe, I don't know, how we can help the mayors around as Washington County. Now we have our own full-blown government relations. And when I say full-blown, even though there are three people, they're very highly competent and highly accomplished three people. So I, I wonder if there's a space to help the mayors sort of coordinate spaces that they need to be. So we'll keep going that. And then, not to take too much time, um, but the other, uh, uh, community event I attended was a, um, workplace change and Portland Business Journal had a conference around, uh, H R and, uh, workplace environment. And it was really good to be there. Uh, they had a really good panel, um, discussion and, uh, questions were asked. I think it was, uh, some prepared questions and some off-the-cuff questions. Former, uh, Governor Kit Hopper was there. As many of you know, I'm a fan of his. And with that, I'll conclude to say I also attended B N S Star Social Hour, um, uh, event with Commissioner Jerry Willey. That was really, um, good to be in among community members that are around housing. So I, I talked to a few people that, um, just, just the stories out there is amazing around housing and how people overcame challenges. I think, I think a lot of people are, it, I don't know. The, one of the thing I took away was how amazing some people can turn obstacles and opportunities to, you know, to just further survive, I would say.
Can I, uh, ask a question back on the Public Health Advisory Committee?
Yes, I don't.
Have you heard anything there about projections for the upcoming flu season? The flu shots are now available and we need to encourage everyone, uh, to consider getting the flu shot. But is there any, any info available on that?
No, I don't think so, but maybe next month, uh, this, yeah, when we have our, yeah, I haven't, I don't know. I'm sure there is informations out there, the team is, but it didn't come up. I can ask.
Well, I know we have flu, um, flu clinics coming up. I just haven't seen any articles about what, what to anticipate with this flu season, if it'll just be typical or atypical.
Yeah. No, we'll send a note to Marie, our Public Health Officer, and she, there's some information we shared. That's good, yeah. Great. And, and that concludes my update. Gentlemen, any updates?
Gentlemen, why the gentlemen?
I heard M E N at the end.
That's right.
Laurel.
Laurel, thank you. Let's see, what would you be interested in? Maybe last week I attended, uh, a transportation committee over W A, which is very interesting, the things that came out of that conversation that Paul Savis and I had. We gave our little talk at the, uh, the Twelton Chamber, was it? ODOT, and this would be good for you, Nefes. They, they've heard our message in regard. Thank you. I need, I need a monitor. I.
I'm happy to be your assistant.
Well, you're not.
Right, right, close to you.
You're my corrector, and that's even better.
Wow.
Anyway, out of conversations that we had a couple of weeks ago, ODOT is now looking at the one mile, three mile. That, that was an important concession because that doesn't work for Washington County so well. So, um, that's good. We'll continue, um, that debate and those discussions. On Friday, had a little meeting on the two seventeen Trans Advisory Committee. And I, I've always been an advocate for more transit, uh, here in Washington County. One of the issues that we have, as you all know, is that, uh, we're, we're somewhat of a desert in certain areas. I have a lot of mine and I know in District Four, I hear that about that. And even in District One, a little bit. I know District Two, they, they don't have much up there. But there's a, and our chair who, uh, does the actual hard work at the local level, you're going to hear that the real counterbalance is more cola for the system, which it has to have, or is it new, new, um, routes? We're pretty devoid of routes. I, the only thing that I objected to, and you'll maybe hear this, is that, uh, the way they measure demand is how much demand is on the system that they now have. And I said, well, it's self-fulfilling. You'll never get any demand if you never put any transit lines in. Uh, there are systems, everybody wants their product and unfortunately we can't deliver. But, um, that's the conversation on two seventeen. I'm, uh, meeting, uh, I met yesterday down in Twelton with the Chamber Group and they heard about their parks lobby and that was interesting information. Tomorrow, meet with Rodney Rhodes, I guess, on finance stuff. And, uh, and I'm going to peek in at that Washington County, uh, Trans Advisory Committee. I'm not a member, I just listen and that sort of thing. Back down in Twelton on Thursday for lunch with their chamber manager. And then on Friday, I have, uh, some reapportionment meetings and then I have, uh, checking with a couple of people and the constituent issues. But, um, anyway, the tolling issue, it's an interesting one. It, it's evolving. And that was, that chamber event had a hundred and ten people. I was the final account. That was a pretty good number of lawless letters who now have some additional things that they want to look at in that particular legislative bill. So that's it, with one exception, and that I have a request of our capable staff. Uh, and it may be just a misspeak on behalf of the President of the United States, but he said on national TV on Sunday night that the pandemic is over. We don't worry, need to worry about that. And now you start getting comments from public about, is it really over? I think he might have misspoken and maybe just got enthusiastic, but it would be good if we knew what the messaging really is. If it's over, it's over. Wonderful, hooray. I, I suspect that's not quite correct, I think that.
Well, actually, I've, I've looked into that myself.
Yeah, good.
And, uh, life is more or less back to normal, which is a sign of it being endemic. We still have a lot of cases.
I agree.
But that is what he's referring to, that we're back to socializing, back to doing things in person. We're not in the phase that we were at back in twenty twenty. Workplaces are back, uh, most functional. So those are signs of being in the endemic phase. So it's great. And for example, uh, on this, uh, business trip that we were on, at first, we were the odd man out in terms of wearing masks. And so I stopped wearing a mask. Masks were not seen. And yes, there was plenty of hand sanitizer around and whatnot, but life is back to a, or life is getting, or is now at a normal functioning phase. And I think that's, that's what he's been referring to.
I appreciate that. Sometimes what happens is that message isn't quite as clear. And if, uh, I'm not saying people need to have, uh, boosters and shots, I happen to do it. But I, I, I don't want to discourage people either and say that it's all, everybody's fine now, so you don't need to take any precautions at all. That, that messy, but.
Well, it's just, uh, endemic is just like with the flu. We're, right? We get, uh, flu vaccines so that we don't have to go through the, the, um, disruption, uh, in our daily lives of being sick. And that's where things are at. The, there are still deaths, but the number of deaths is much lower than where we were at two years ago. So it's nice to finally be on this side of the curve. But we still need to be mindful that it's a very smart, crafty vaccine, I mean, virus. So, yeah.
Thank you, and if I may, oh, jump in, I'm sorry.
Great.
Chair Harrington.
Oh, please.
I was just going to add, I think we've couched it as we're learning to live with the pandemic. It is an endemic, but we're learning to live. So to your point, we're just making those adjustments and continuing to change as we learn more and as we all come back into the workplace and into our daily.
Not discourage people not to get shots and not discourage people to forget that they need to take precautions. Like a flu shot, you know? Okay.
I did hear this morning on the news that, um, it will continue to be the leading cause of death though. So that was, that was an interesting piece. It's so, which is, it's not gone. It's learning to live with it, learning to, with the vaccination opportunities are and the hygiene opportunities. Commissioner Rogers, I have a question for you. I, I was, while traveling, got a notice from, uh, Courtney Neuron about, Representative Neuron, about the headline in the Pamplin newspaper. And, you know, that in the headline was, uh, County Commissioners Blast I two oh five tolling proposal.
It was a different meeting than I was at, but that's okay.
No, that was about the Twelton Chamber Forum.
I'm, I'm being. Being facetious, yeah. The headline didn't capture it, it will.
And I guess my concern would be, since we have, we have agreed to support this, I just wanted to know how, how you represented that because it, I understand that it was misleading. But it made me concerned and, and plus I, you know, get a call from a representative saying, I thought you said that the board supported this.
So your question is, how did you go about representing the board position?
We were, we were fair and balanced. We just simply talked about the program and what the program conditions are.
But how did you, did you represent us is what I'm asking?
I, I think I, what I said was what our position was. But all we simply did is talk about what was in the bill and how it was working and what the questions are. And so that's what happened. Even the chamber came back and said, oh, it's an odd, odd sort of headline because I didn't represent what was happening. And there were anti-tolling groups who were there who wanted to speak and they didn't want to allow them. There were representatives who wanted to speak, but they didn't let them. It was supposed to be fair and balanced. Wish that was intent, very fair and balanced. Here's what's in the act. Here's, here's what we've got to do. Here's what everybody's looking at. But everybody was pretty revved up. I can tell you, it's, it's a very emotional issue. It has huge impacts. The more you get into it, the more you understand.
So you can understand my concern. I had just had a conversation with Representative Neuron and then it wasn't clear to me that you had represented what the, but that was only through the media. So this is my opportunity to directly ask you.
I, I, I think I did. I, I think my position is different after, uh, doing extensive study than what we're at right now. So I will talk in the future about my position and not this board when I have an opportunity. If I'm representing this board, then obviously I will represent the board's position.
Thank you.
As a personal, um, I've got a very different take on that now.
Well, I think the norm is to make sure that you represent the board position and then, and then explain that your position is different. You know, we're each independent elected officials, but once the board has taken a position, that position needs to be represented and then go into your personal.
Yes, I.
And that's what I hear Commissioner Trees asking.
Perfect, and it's a great question. I, I would hope maybe we'd revisit our position at some point. But, uh, if we don't want to, that's fine. Perfect, but.
And, and like I said, it was, it, it came from a legislator. It's like, whoa, wait a minute, and.
And I had another legislator who was, uh, from that end of the town said, I don't think we all completely understood the ramifications when we voted in the legislature that way. And wanted to speak and now wants to speak about their concern about a particular measure. So, I mean, it's, it was difficult. I felt sorry for the chamber manager. She said, I had everybody yelling at me to get time and I just wanted a factual presentation, period. So materials that were used were ODOT's materials.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Willey, thank you for holding down the fort as Vice Chair. You know, I'm sorry that you had a, a crisis to deal with, with the wildfires and the electrical shutdowns.
Yeah, no, P G E did a great job of communicating. We had, uh, generally two updates every day. And they were very clear on which sections they were going to shut down electricity in advance. And then when they shut them down, when they were going to come back around, we've got a wrap-up. Uh, I believe it's Thursday, uh, with, um, with P G E and, and the other partners that went along with that. But, um, overall, it was, um, I mean, it was supposed to be, I think, a little worse probably on the east side than here. I played golf Thursday afternoon in the wind, so it didn't seem to have much of impact out here. But, um, P G E did a great job of communicating with everybody and so did, uh, John, our, um, E O C guy. So.
Yeah, we, being away was a little strange. But we, I know, I at least tried to look at the emails and understand what was going on. At the Tri-County Chair Meeting yesterday, Chair Smith shared that there were areas in Clackamas County where P G E had taken the power down, but those areas experienced no wind. And so there was frustration from those aspects of the community. But, you know, how do you manage these, these crises?
Better safe than sorry.
Yeah.
That was their mantra.
Yeah.
From the beginning, as they, they were not going to let wildfires win the day.
And, and I saw from the newspaper that there were a couple of brush fires here in Washington County, but they were able to get on those.
So, could I ask a question about this?
Yeah, yeah.
Reading that, coming from the energy industry, that, that's the first time that I've seen a proactive approach to closing down, um, big transmission areas. And so when you do the wrap-up, I'd like to see what the, um, you know, what the, what do we do well? What do we need to do a little better? And I'm not saying that it wasn't done well. The communication level was very high. But it is, it's a big change. It's a sea change in relationship to managing, uh, the energy sources. And I'm certain it came from the experiences with, uh, the, the previous fires and some of the litigation that's going on and that type of thing. But I just, I would just be interested in hearing what the, uh, where, where the improvement points are as well. So.
Yeah, well, you're certainly welcome to join me if you'd like to as well. The, um, and the interesting thing is, is, you know, we learned in, with all the wildfires in twenty twenty, the Sandy M fire and all of that, a lot of that was, um, caused by, uh, transmission lines. And so, yes, you're right. I, I believe this is a total philosophical change in our electric company's, uh, perspective and what they're going to do with that. And the interesting thing is, we all know there's, the winds are much more intense in the gorge. And they didn't exactly know where that was going to be. You love. And they didn't exactly know where that was going to be. You love up on Sylvan. So your area is certainly much more highly subject to those kinds of things. And then as it moves further out here west, it seemed to mitigate, but then it picked up again up over the coastal mountains. And so you can't predict those things. And I, I think they were, I think they were taking the high road and trying to be extremely safe on this, so.
So I was driving to the airport Friday afternoon and out in the gorge, it was tremendous. There was a lot of wind and there were, we were driving through the blackout situations. It was, it was pretty impactful.
Yeah. Megan lost a bet on that. We were betting you were not going to make it out on your schedule time, so. But yeah, so it was good that you did because, you know, those connections are tough. But anyway, so yes, I'll be glad to report back. And like I said, I, if either of you, any of you want to join me on that PGE recap, glad to do that. There's a lot of people on that, on that line. I met with Greater Portland Inc. consultant this last week as well. They are going through a three to five year strategic plan. This consultant was interviewing a number of the board members, probably all of them, which is a pretty good number. And just getting a perspective on not only the region, but the difficulties of promoting and encouraging companies to come here. Again, their focus is retention and expansion as well. So we can't lose fact of the, the side of the fact that we have really, really good businesses here and we need to keep them happy. And if they have growth opportunity, we need to provide that for them. So when that information comes out, which will probably be a couple of more months, I'll certainly share that with the board as well as to where they're going. They, they have been talking for years and years and years since, basically since we started that they are a significantly underfunded organization. And so we'll see where exactly that goes and what they're going to do about that. Yeah, Nafisa and I went to La Ora Social with Bienestar. That was a very nice event. We saw Senator Solomon was there as well as a few others, but it was, it was good event. And you know, you're, you're exactly correct, Nafisa. They had one of their, one of their women that had been provided the services and has now moved up into helping others get those services. And it was just really kind of heartwarming that you, that we have an organization like Bienestar that provides those services, nurtures people along and there's, there's success programs that come out of there. So that was, that was certainly worth the time in the evening to go out there and, and visit those folks. Last night had our very first Council Creek Regional Trail elected the Facial Steering Committee. We don't have an acronym for that. But if you remember, that's a, that's a new committee that we're focused on. Certainly working through the design and the facilitation, getting Council Creek Trail up and going. I think the projected year is two thousand and twenty nine. So we've got a lot of work to do between here and there. But last night was our first meeting there and so we'll have those on a monthly basis coming forward. Let's see, I also am meeting with KL this week. He's got an update he wants to share with all of us. I'm presenting to the CCI meeting tonight. They just want an update on what we're doing here specifically. They want to hear more about rural broadband and I think they're redistricting. And then we'll have a few more things that we'll pass out there. GPI Summit is tomorrow morning, so that'll be good to get kind of a regional perspective again, get back together. We haven't had one for a couple of years.
I never got the invite, neither did I.
You know, I don't know what they do with that because I've asked several people if they're going and they said no. So it's a much smaller program. It's two hours now. It used to be, used to be breakfast and then go through lunch.
Well, as due paying members, they probably look at who they invite.
I will certainly bring that up.
And this is the one, this is the, this is GPI. This is the one that's, okay, I was confusing it with the business meeting in December. That's OBC. Yeah, I was confusing those.
So I think that's, that's all. Lots of, lots of stuff going on. Oh, I wanted to give a shout out to Diame because he covered the slide presentation last night in the Council Creek Trail presentation. And of course, Stephen and Erin were there, so thank you for that as well. Well, we'll see where we go on the next meeting.
Wonderful.
That's good enough. Thank you, Chair.
Well, once again, thank you for handling all the duties while, while I was away. I just want to make sure commissioners, you all have the heads up that we have the AOC district date meeting next Wednesday. It's face to face. It'll be really good. Yesterday I had my monthly chair mayor's meeting. And I flagged where we're at with reapportionment and inquired their feedback about how to help their newer, their incoming new city council members and mayors to get up to speed on Washington County, but also county government, what it is and what we have and how we have uniquenesses, plus clean water services. So they're very interested in CWS one oh one, county government one oh one, which I'm hoping AOC already has. I, I've already seen one, but I just have to find the link to it. And a Washington County one oh one. And I asked them about timing. And they expressed that given that many of them have their goal setting efforts in February, that having something from us, for example, board members coming to their work sessions and having, you know, come one, come all to new incoming city councillors by the end of January would be great. They also expressed how valuable the CWS hands-on tours have been. So I just wanted to share those kudos. This week, I've got what I think is the last Washington County Transit Advisory Committee meeting, the Washington County Visitors Association Board of Directors, and then the Housing Services Tour on Friday. As to the, the trip that we were on to attend the World Water Congress, the every other year conference put on by the International Water Association. It was a great experience. Our CEO Diane Tanaguchi Dennis had suggested that I and Commissioner Threes attend, given the intersection of water, our worldwide water supply and climate adaptation and climate change. The next conference will be held in Toronto, Canada in August of two thousand and twenty four. So a different month than usual, but also here in North America. So I want to encourage all of us as commissioners to consider that. But also think about mayors, councillors, not just in Washington County, but throughout Oregon to potentially go because you learn so much about the water ecosystem, whether it's drinking water, storm water, water resource recovery, wastewater or waste treatment. The experience was similar to what you experienced at the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and other events. Pent up demand to be together, learn together. At the keynote on Sunday night, then the keynote Monday morning. I learned a lot about climate adaptation and weather expectations or experiences and forecasts. You know, I've seen on the US national news all this summer, those thunderstorms going from our Midwest all the way through the east coast and now hurricane season. The forecast shows or what was explained to us is how the jet stream has changed, what is forecast into the future decade for our jet stream experience. So what we have here with a longer dry season and then outside of that cooler, wetter timeframe, that's forecasting to continue. I tell you, based upon the experience of this summer with different urban areas in the US and the flooding that they've experienced from very intense storms, I wouldn't want to live there. There's going to be more of that. In Europe, they call them cloud bursts. Very intense heavy rain in a shortish period of time, unlike the hurricane that Puerto Rico just experienced over like thirty five inches in two days. My gosh. But anyway, it was quite an experience. And I really want to thank Diane and Mark Jockers for helping me ensure that our strategy really does match the situation. It's still scary worldwide. And I'd like to get some of the slides from the keynote speaker because the, the way climate has affected our worldwide ecosystem. We're on this shared water journey, but there are countries in the middle section of the globe and further to the south that have greater impacts than we do. And, you know, for the Midwest and the east coast, I happen to think that's still a little scary. So for those of us who used to take for granted that we could fly all over the US without too much problems, what we've learned this summer is with these weather activities, that's not necessarily the case. So one big learning, workforce challenges, it's global. It's not just here in our region. It's not just here in our country. It's in every country. They can't find enough workers. They've had retirements, but they need prepared workers. And the demand in all sectors is very high. I didn't quite expect to learn that, but it came up over and over and over again. So.
Could I add?
Please do.
You know, I, I'd like to have a time with my fellow commissioners when we talk about some, really some things in detail. But high level, I would also like to express my thanks to Diane and to Mark. They did a great job. It was also, it's always so reaffirming and we've had this experience before. When you go to these conferences and someone that you work with is held in such high regard and presents at a stage that, you know, you just are surprised at. And Diane did that and did it so eloquently. She, she did a fabulous job.
She spoke in three different sessions.
And the, the other piece that for me that I want to be working on, and you, as you all know, Commissioner Fai and I have been looking at our climate resolution and that'll be coming forward is, is how do we link these pieces together so that we're communicating directly with our, our public at a level that, that provides information and ties us to the larger picture. And one of the, one of the keys is the sustainability, sustainable development goals or the SDGs that have been established by the UN. So we'll, we'll be talking a little bit more about that. But along that same line, we got to go on a tour of a waste treatment plant there that, you know, it's like, yay, a waste treatment plant. But this place was unbelievably beautiful. And it was consistent with kind of Danish architecture and, and that type of thing where the, the treatment plant was under a berm. And on top of this berm was this beautiful planting of succulents. And it was open to the public with trails and people having picnics on top of a wastewater treatment plant below, which is, but it, but they're very, the people that attend there are very well aware of what's going on. Another example was this, we, we didn't tour it, but we learned about it through some of our other tours. This big incinerator, if you will, that, that basically took care of a lot of waste. And it is designed, you can see it from the harbor, it has kind of a, a triangle type of design. And on the, it's, you can see it's burning the waste from Copenhagen and from other areas. But it also, the design allows for a ski hill on the top. So people are skiing down while, while this incinerator is working and there's rock walls on the side. So they're, they're using it as a recreational piece. But that just demonstrates what they've done in relationship to communicating to their public about the importance of the sustainability goals and how you, it doesn't have to be something that is hidden from view or isn't, isn't utilized by the public as well. So those types of, you know, you can read about it, but somehow seeing it and seeing people actively engage is, is a different piece. But again, my hat's off to Diane and to Mark. And so I, and I know Mark isn't listening, but Diane may be. So, you know, it was, and she has her mobility challenges. She was such a trooper to get to all these different pieces. And given the fact that she's had personal life issues, I'm just, I was very moved by the fact that she, she was there and fulfilled her obligations in relationship to the conference and did us proud.
Yes, she was very sought after by folks around the globe. So.
I'll, I'll pass on your sentiments. Thank you very much. Very kind.
So, sorry to take so long this morning, leadership communication. Hello, Erin Calvert. Thanks for stepping in as our, our interim CIO.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington, commissioners. I'll be brief with updates in the, in the, thinking about time. I did want to mention, we're proud to note that Washington County's own Robin Strawn was selected as a top three finalist for the Alice Award from the Street Trust, formerly known as the Bicycle Transportation Alliance. Street Trust is a nonprofit focused on a mission of advocacy for multimodal transportation options region wide. And while she did not win the award, she was selected out of fifty nominees for her commitment to safe, sustainable and equitable active transportation options in our communities. So well done and congratulations, Robin. And then switching gears, Hillsborough will be opening the temporary pod shelter soon. The current goal is to open the pod shelter around October seventh. And this is a partnership with the city of Hillsborough and will be our first pod shelter. Some of the pods will start to arrive as soon as October twenty third. And the site will be prepared with fencing and shower trailer and group tents.
Where is that?
It will be, I mean, it's around the Dairy Creek area.
Right behind Wayne Court.
Right, yeah, got it.
Nafisa is not at all interested in this, but I'd like to attend.
There will be just a couple of other points. There will be outreach workers that focus on shelter enrollment for campers near and around the Dairy Creek area. They'll provide access to shelter. They're going to be working with Community Connect, which all twenty, which does the organization outreach. And outreach workers, workers will provide information to houseless individuals at the encampments on one eighty fifth and Shaw as well. The shelter will serve adults, couples or singles. And there's no other eligibility requirements other than just participating in the program's code of conduct. Drugs and alcohol are not allowed on site and there will be some provision for pets. And then just two things to be aware of in terms of the timeline. PGE says they can hook up, they can't hook up power until about October fifteenth. And there is, as no surprise to anyone in this room, potential supply chain problems with windows. So that's something that they're working around as well. And that concludes my update. Thank you.
Just one quick point, all over this morning on news, I keep seeing it's costing the county eighty two dollars a day. I, I can't believe that number. That might be eighty two dollars per person, but.
I'll check on that for you. I'm not sure.
Yeah, that was all over news this morning, eighty two bucks. And so, wow, that's the bargain of all time.
Try finding a hotel room for that.
Right.
Yeah.
Divide by enough days, you get it down to eighty two.
I maybe, yeah.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and commissioners. Just for the record, since probably public's not seen me before, my name's Courtney Duke Threes and I'm sitting in for Tom Carr, who's on vacation this week with his family, much deserved. In his absence, he did ask me to give a couple of little gate litigation updates, which has been his practice. And I'm just going to give you two today. As you know, we've got more than that, but these are two highlights. First, today starts a two-day trial right across the street. Jason Bush is defending the county in Washington County versus Tim Simple. And that is the case that arose out of the public records request for elections related material from the May, last May election. As you've heard, there's quite a bit of public interest in this case, but that is just starting this morning. Second, you may have seen that last week, the Oregon Supreme Court denied the plaintiff's petition to review the award in Lynn County versus state, which is the timber case. As you know, that's the case where Lynn County Court assessed the large penalty in damages against the state.
As you know, that's the case where Lynn County Court assessed the large penalty in damages against the state. The state appealed, the Court of Appeals said that the state's motion to dismiss in the circuit case should have been granted. And the plaintiff's appealed that ruling and the Supreme Court denied that review, which means the case is over. So that is all I was going to highlight for you today. And Tom will be back next week and can give you an update on some of the other cases that are continuing to move forward.
Thank you, Courtney.
Yep.
Yep, we have, we have a great lineup in our management team so that our executives can be out on vacation, on business, take care of their own health, what have you, and we are in good hands. So thank you to the two of you, plus Mr. Jerry Linder here for Clean Water Services.
Thank you. Ms. Taniguchi Dennis is out dealing with some family matters. So I did want to mention that she was very appreciative of your time coming, you know, halfway across the world. We understand it is a big commitment of your valuable time and traveling is not easy. If any of the public thinks these things are just a big vacation, it's a lot of work to make it to these things. And, and we were so pleased that the value that we had hoped would be there for you was there. I mean, I've already spoken with Diane since her return and she was thrilled that it, it was everything that she'd hoped for. It's not always the case at all these conferences, right? Sometimes like, well, it was okay. But she really felt like the, the value that was hoped for, that, that you would both get from it. And it certainly sounds like from your report that you did get that. So thank you for your attendance though. That's a, that's a big deal and very, very appreciated. The only other thing I'd mention is there are a couple of items on Consent Agenda Day that were pulled. Just so you know, why their large machine purchase refurbished machines and we were working on the price and contract negotiations. And unfortunately, there is a seven-day requirement in our rules for sole source prior to the board being able to approve that. That's there so that if someone else out in the manufacturing world says, I could provide that, why are you doing this sole source? They have the opportunity to come forward and tell us that.
Yep.
And so by the time we got ready to put it in the paper, we couldn't get it published, but, but for six days before, that's not enough. So it will be coming back to you soon.
Good job for doing it right.
Thank you.
Chair Harrington, I forgot one thing from one of my updates and then I forgot one item that I.
Take it away, Commissioner.
I got nudged, so thanks to the staff. The, the workplace change and the Portland Business Journal Conference that I attended, Washington County was actually recognized and celebrated as a changemaker. I wanted to add that, which was a key information. And so, good job.
I look forward to a Horizon spotlight, both on Robin's recognition by the Street Trust and that PBJ call-out. That's great.
Yeah, that was a really good, yeah. And then the last item that I forgot to mention was I had a really good meeting with Mayor Truax, who isn't running for reelection and I think this November, yep, this is last month. And we actually talked about the, the Hills.
Which, which mayor?
Mayor Truax.
Oh, I knew that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And some cities swear in their new mayor within a short time period of the election results and others wait until January.
Yeah, I, yeah, I didn't know that. We talked about that, yeah, I didn't know either. I thought he was going to leave in January, but he's actually, yeah.
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 Yeah, there's, there are several city council and mayor seats on, in November, so, yep.
Two people are running for his seat, I think he's endorsing one of them. But, yeah, we, Erin, disregard what Commissioner Willie said, I am interested, first of all. And then secondly, we, Mayor Truax and I talked about that shelter and the connection to Bain Camp M47.
Very well.
Thank you, Nafisa.
Thank you. And one quick follow-up, if I may, I just got information from Commissioner Rogers, Chair Harrington, that the base rate for the shelter program is $85 per day per person, but that doesn't include the capital costs or what we pay to operate the shelter, of course.
For the services, yes.
Thanks, that was on KGW and they were saying $86. It's total cost for the county and more. Wow.
Yeah, for the onsite services. Marnie has a clarification for us.
Per person, not for the entire thing.
And there are meals, there's sanitation, other services provided onsite by such firms. Yeah. Everybody clear on that?
Mm-hmm, yeah, thank you.
It's okay. Our, our news media does its best to leverage our, our project announcements and we don't always get it 100%. So, so for our business meeting that will be starting up here soon, there were, as mentioned by Jerry, two consent agenda items that were per, polled. So there are eight items. We have three different items under boards and commissions, one public hearing, one action item that I believe we've all been briefed on previously, so should be straightforward. And then we will re-convene our work session after our lunch break. Terrific. Any other questions on the board agenda? Nope. Seeing none, then we'll go convene in our auditorium and give our staff the necessary time. We got us set up over there. Terrific, thanks, see you later.
Hopefully the clock in that room is better than this one.
This one, yeah.